The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'll call the council to order. As the role reflected, all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Nelson. Quorum has been established. We have the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on December 21st. Counsel, is there any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? I do want to make a note one correction, if I may, just for, it's on page five of the minutes, to the top in regards to the Schultz amendment at the last time. Strike out the "no more 75,000 cubic feet of debris at site at one time." That was already in the permit. And so the Schultz motion was to have conditions added that require removal of debris at that date and prior to commencing crushing obtain staff approval of location. Okay, just want to correct that for the record. Is there any other discussion about that? Okay, seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Tonight, we're going to have a presentation. First of all, we're going to recognize a very special member of our community who's been a volunteer, and we want to take this opportunity tonight to recognize the fine work that Mr. Terry Seaman has done for the Public Safety Advisory Commission. And I'll turn that over to Chief of Police, Chief Schaefer. Welcome to the meeting tonight, Chief. Very glad to have you here.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. I can't tell you how much of a pleasure it is. It's kind of bittersweet, if you will, because Terry has been just a great asset to the Public Safety Advisory Commission. Though I've only been here a couple of years, Terry has brought a tremendous amount of wisdom and experience. He brings common sense and just all-around great character and personality to the group. So as I said, it's a distinct pleasure to be able to publicly recognize and thank Terry for his volunteer service to the City of Hastings. As we were kind of checking the records today, they said, well, Terry's been involved with the city as a volunteer for a number of years. So with the help of our staff, we were able to kind of narrow this down a little bit, but it looks like about 15 years of volunteer service overall, give or take. You may correct us on that. But he served on the Charter Commission from 1994 to 2001, the NRRC Commission from 2002 to 2003, the Police Civil Service Commission from 2008 to 2011, and the Public Safety Advisory Commission from about 2011 to 2015. So it's quite an extensive period of time for somebody to commit their time as a volunteer. And I think, I know the mayor, you're good at this, and so I had to pull a quote, just a real short quote, and it's by Winston Churchill, and he said, "We make a living by what we get; we make a life by what we give." And Terry's been a dedicated public service volunteer, having contributed greatly to the fabric of this community, and yes, he lives by what he gives. So tonight, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the city, behalf of the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the citizens of Hastings for all that you have given, because the countless hours, the extra work that you had to do to do your part, it goes above and beyond. So with that, I would like to present you with this certificate. If you'd step forward, please.
It says Certificate of Appreciation, and this is in acknowledgement for your six years of service to the Hastings Public Safety Advisory Commission, awarded to Terry Seaman on January 4th, 2016, signed by the Honorable Paul J. X. Mayor.
Terry, if you'd like to say a few words, you certainly may, and we're very proud of your work and your accomplishment and your spirit of volunteerism. It's, you know, it's something that other people can look to, and thank you for your fine example.
Well, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for appointing me originally to the Police Civil Service Commission.
A few years ago, right there.
And then continuing into when we morphed into the Public Safety Advisory Commission. So I appreciate you all for what you do, and thank you very much, and hopefully we can get some more people from the good citizens of the city to serve on this commission and other commissions. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate it. Councilmember Schultz?
Terry, have you ever served on the Planning Commission?
No, not yet, ma'am.
Okay. Got that down.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay. I always like to begin council meetings like this. It's a good reminder how important volunteerism is in our city, and we have so many great volunteers in our city that really advance the quality of the life here in our great community. So thank you, and I see other volunteers here as well, so thank you. Next, counsel, we have a presentation by Dean Margeson, talking about an upcoming program, Empowering Veterans to Achieve a Higher Quality of Life, and also our Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Campaign Coordinator, Dean, for an update. Thank you, Dean, for being here this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. First remark I want to make, freedom is not free. Our theme in Hastings, as you said, is empowering veterans to achieve a higher quality of life. That's the theme we'll carry forward. So good morning, good evening, Mayor, City Council, and residents. My purpose tonight is to provide an update on the Military and Veteran Services Community Initiative, inform you of some of the exciting upcoming happenings. Brevity will be the key. However, a clear and concise report will be provided. Some of our military families are single, married, or both serving. Upon receipt of orders for deployment, there is a change in family structure and readjustments. While the family is visible to a few, the community does not know they exist. Once the overseas tour is over, the family is reunited to the joy of many friends. However, crisis may occur. Then the day arrives that they decide to part ways from the service, and another transition starts, being a civilian. Employment, it may be higher education. Hopefully, the experience has been successful. What I have just described are veterans within our community. Our mission is to foster a relationship with our service members, veterans, families, and the community, with the goal of developing, strengthening the family, adding value, having fun, being engaged, and committed to sustainable awareness and commitment for the purpose of visibility, delivery, connecting opportunities to serve, support, and accommodate needs. The community's revitalization plan started in April with communities throughout the metropolitan area, with constant updating and refueling. Specific community challenges are addressed with commitment and resolution. Who are our families in the community? Active duty, guard, reserves, and veterans? What are some of our challenges? Veteran services, disability, poverty, and homelessness. Visibility in community festivities is essential, as is joining community forces through partnerships, contacts, and referrals. Discussion of issues are hosted at table talks in January, April, and October. As you see, we only have three meetings a year. Our strengths are the community values. You'll recognize them. Communicating the issues and successes, optimum services with referrals, connections and activities, respect for resources, and enthusiasm. We are appreciated in saying thanks and observing patriotic holidays, stepping forward with life-changing help when our brothers and sisters need it the most. We continue to grow and evolve to public relations, technology, and social exposure. I only ask for an hour or two of your time. Our philosophy is giving from the heart and not fundraising. United Way of Hastings is our physical agent, which serves the Hastings Independent School area. What's some of our upcoming activities? January 14th, we're going to talk about employment. We're going to talk about employee rights. We're going to talk about employer recognition. We're going to talk about military transition. We're going to talk about higher education in 90 minutes. That's worth eating. On 23 January, the Hastings High School basketball will host a doubleheader, military appreciation. The girls' basketball game is at 3:00, and the boys play at 7:00 against some of our highest rivals. My thank goes out to the community, especially my partners and the veteran service organizations. Vietnam veterans are celebrating their 50th anniversary until 2025. So to all Vietnam veterans, welcome home. We've accomplished a lot in the last, in the community, and we've got a lot coming up. And I would like to say, I need the community's help, because I can't do it alone. And yes, deployments are down, so I might not need a lot of snow shoveling, or mowing lawns, or cleaning the house. What do you do in your house on a daily basis? That's the help that our military and veterans may need. The key thing I'm looking at is public relations, such as Rivertown days. Be at a booth, saying thank you, and if a veteran has any particular issues, giving them direction. That's the primary job of Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. The other thing, big event that we're coming up, hopefully we'll see next month, we have the brand-new unit in Hastings, the 434th Chemical Unit. They moved from Norfield. Their commander will be coming in front of the council and briefing you on their mission. And then we'll have a follow-up meeting out of the armory, and we're going to discuss services in the community. I want to say one thing where the community really stepped up. We have a young, 24-year-old Air Force service member from Scott Air Base in Illinois. She got blew up in Afghanistan, and the community is stepping out with cards of thanks. So if anybody in the community wants to give her a card, a thought, drop it off at the radio station. Let me see if I see anything else. That's all I got, unless there's an... I'd like to really emphasize that meeting on the 14th, because I know Councilmember Alaji will be the emcee, and he knows all the presenters. And the one statement that I can say, it's power that's coming to Hastings. I don't know if you want to add anything about DED or the Workforce Center?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Alaji? Your Honor, and thank you, Dean. DED is an agency. I recently took a different job at the state, and with all due respect to DED, I worked there for 15 years, and it was my honor to assist not only dislocated workers generally, but veterans in particular over that time. It would be my honor to be emceeing the event a week from this Thursday. Social hour starts at 6:00 down at the Nelson Lucking Post that Commander Bolsonak here ably is in charge of. So it would be my honor to be there and to welcome all comers in providing information, support, enthusiasm to this community's veterans and communities from beyond, not just for Hastings. I noticed in the materials that this is an open invite. Veterans who are having difficulty with work and life challenges can and should come a week from Thursday, 6:00, to the Post 47 down off of Sibley there. So I'm looking forward to it, Dean. Thank you for the honor of being there in any capacity.
I thank you for volunteering to help me.
There you go. Well, thank you, Dean, for that report. We appreciate it. We appreciate getting the report of Beyond the Yellow Ribbon activities and other things involving our veterans and our community. As you know, we value our veterans here in Hastings, and your fine work and the work of other volunteers like Councilmember Alaji is a testament to that. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, the next item is council items to be considered. Are there any council items to be considered? Seeing none, we'll go to consent agenda. Counsel, what's your wish? Councilmember Schultz makes a motion to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Is there a discussion to that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have before us is the, under community development, the council may recall that we tabled the resolution in regards to a special use permit at the mining permit at the Holst Mining. Before we move any further, I would ask that a motion be made to take this off the table. Councilmember Schultz makes that motion, seconded by Councilmember Brock, that motion to take off the table. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. That motion prevails. This item is now before us. Counsel, this is a, this is a matter of parliamentary procedure. Many of you know that we had an amendment that was adopted to the special use permit. Speaking things with legal counsel and everything else, what I would like to do later, we'll go through John's explanation, but is to, let's vote down what we had before and start over. Okay? That way, there will be clear direction on the special use permit, and if there's any amendments that are offered, we can take that then. In fact, if I can, I would like to ask that now, just if we can, to clear the slate and so we can start over. So right before the body, right now, is the motion to adopt the special use permit. I will ask counsel to reject that, and then we will start new, if that's all right. Okay? Who would like to make that motion to deny? Or not deny, just to make the motion to advance this, and we'll vote it down, I hope. Okay. Thank you, Councilmember, and seconded, Councilmember Bolsonak. Okay, that motion is before us now. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. No. Okay? The special use permit that was before us, that was amended, is no longer in front of the council. John's had a special use permit that had the Planning Commission recommendation. John, you might want to go through that again. If we want to have changes later, we can discuss that.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I'll give a brief background on the issue before us and some of the action that occurred at the last meeting as well. Before us is a special use permit for mining and soil processing for Bill Holst located at 2800 Ravanna Trail. This is the location of the site near Glendale Road and Ravanna Trail. Counsel may recall that this is a permit that has been active for a number of years. The existing permit has expired. We're looking to reissue it for another couple of years out to 2018. The activities on the site that were consistent with the existing permit would still be ongoing on the site. The plans that are in place, the soil excavation, the reclamation plans, and many of the conditions within the existing permit carry forward to the new permit itself. During discussion of the permit, we did go to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission, to have their review of the report as well. The Planning Commission did make a few changes to what the staff had recommended for in their recommendation to Planning Commission. Specifically, there was an elimination of no more concrete or asphalt debris being brought into the site until the existing debris was removed. In particular, we're noting this location here on the site. Most of the rubble within this area was part of the bridge demolition project, and we did receive a concern from a neighboring property owner that this be crushed and removed from the site. The other would be the existing debris would be recycled and removed prior to expiration of this new special use permit, which would be December of 2018. So those were two items that staff had brought forward. Ultimately, the Planning Commission had rejected those and instead inserted a condition that says, no more than 75,000 cubic yards of rubble would be placed on the site at any one time. During the Planning Commission discussion, Mr. Holst was present. They discussed the project. I think the Planning Commission's objective was to limit the amount of rubble that would be on the site for crushing, and the 75,000 figure was brought forward. That 75,000 figure, I think, represented the existing site as well as a little bit more beyond that. Looks like there would be some other materials that would need to be brought into site in order to properly crush and to transform into final product. So we did bring this forward to the City Council at the December 21st meeting. Before you on the Diaz were an explanation and some of the amendments that were brought forward. There was a discussion of the asphalt debris upon the site. There were some questions that the council had for Mr. Holst as well, that he is present tonight, that he can address those for you. But ultimately, the amendments that were presented are before you. I could stand for any questions that you may have specific to those. Mr. Holst is available here as well. Bill, I'm not sure if you wanted to just give a little explanation on the timeframe of the crushing activities and some of the activities in the next couple of years during the permit?
They want me to write that down.
Okay. We'd love to hear that. Thank you, Mr. Holst, for being here at the meeting. Thank you for being here.
My name is Bill Holst. I'm from Prescott, Wisconsin. Been operating that pit here for probably about 10 years, somewhere in that area, and before that, I operated another one just across the road for probably 20 years. Monday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, I met with a crushing company and got a proposal to crush 10,000 tons of that pile. And our plan is to either do it shortly before road postings go on or after they've come off. He doesn't know exactly how many, what his timeframe is. He has a lot of other jobs to do, but he did give me a proposal, so that's what we're looking at doing. So I would say probably on or before June, I should be able to crush about 10,000 tons there, and then I'll be marketing that product. Basically, what it can be used for is road base. We'll make a Class 6 out of it. And I had asked that I could bring, keep bringing material in, because otherwise, people don't want to buy it unless they can bring their other stuff in. We also have a lot of material from the street projects here in Hastings that were brought in, and then they'd take sand back for filling and things like that. So all of the pits that we've operated always have a re-crushing. You know, we take it in, we re-crush it, and we sell it. And that's the only way that you can find a place to reuse it, and, you know, everybody's into recycling. Otherwise, the only thing you can do with it is landfill it, and that's probably not the best use for it. We are encroached on the neighbor's property a little bit. That's the first thing that we're going to do, is take that corner out of there so there is no encroachment. We'll get that resolved. I was not aware of that until we got the aerial view. I'm surprised the neighbors haven't told me about it, but they must be pretty understanding. But anyway, any questions?
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Holst, when you say 10,000 tons of, how much is that, of that amount that's out there?
I think it's roughly a third. We don't know exactly, but that's the plan, is to do about 10,000 a year for the next three years to get that all crushed.
Next three years to get rid of that, okay? Counsel, is there any questions for Mr. Holst at all? Continuing questions? Councilmember Schultz?
I would like to make a motion, Your Honor.
You know what? Before we do, let's get the main motion before the body first.
What's the main motion?
The main motion was to advance the special use permit.
Okay.
And we'll talk about amendments.
Okay, I will do that.
Councilmember Schultz makes a motion to approve the special use permit. Is there a second to that motion? This is as it was originally from Planning Commission. Councilmember Vaughn seconds that motion. Okay, we have that before us, the special use permit as it was adopted from the Planning Commission. Okay, Councilmember Schultz?
Well, first of all, I would like to amend it as we had back two weeks ago, that the existing debris must be recycled and removed prior to the expiration of the current, of the new special use permit on December 21st, 2018.
Okay.
And I believe...
Would you also like to include the other one about the staff being notified?
Yes. Staff must be notified of when and where the crushing activity commences on the site.
Okay.
Well, that's why I went... Am I free to speak?
Yes, go right ahead.
That's why I went to the Planning Commission meeting, and I explained to them that we need to be able to bring material in, so it's an ongoing thing. It takes time to establish a business of selling recycle. You can't just stop and start and expect to do anything. So that, for your motion, that doesn't work for me.
Well, I didn't add in the 75,000 square, the cubic feet part.
75,000 cubic feet stays in the permit conditions. That doesn't change.
Just to clarify, 75,000...
What she's saying is, in the next three years...
Cubic yards, not cubic feet.
Cubic yards.
Oh, it says cubic feet right here, sorry.
Cubic yards.
Right.
So the 75,000 stays. What she's basically saying is what you just said, that you hope to have it all done by three years from now, or the end of this special use permit.
Yeah, but she just said that I couldn't bring any more in.
No, I did not. No, I did not.
And I misunderstood you. I'm sorry.
No, I said, staff must be notified of when and where the crushing activity commences on the site.
Okay, I can show you right now where that's going to go, if you'd like to know.
That's fine, but when you start, we just want you to let John Hinsman know as a staff person.
Okay, all right.
But no, I didn't add that other condition in there.
Okay.
Okay, I misunderstood you.
So just to be clear, the 75,000 cubic yard stays. You're able to do that.
All right.
It just follows up what you had mentioned, that you'd like to have this crushing operation go on for the next three years to be able to handle that load. That's what the council is doing. It's going until December 21st, 2018, three years. So we're following what you suggested is a good idea.
Okay.
And then also, her amendment clarifies that contact staff about where and when you're going to commence the crushing. Okay?
Very good.
That's just the two conditions she added on. Does that, how does that, can you live with those conditions?
That sounds great.
Okay, all right. We have the Schultz amendment before us. Is there any further discussion to the Schultz amendment? I need, it does need a second. Councilmember Bolsonak? Councilmember Bolsonak seconds that. Councilmember Alaji?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just checking in with the maker and seconder of the motion. Is it your intent that the, just as the applicant has suggested, that the crushing and removal of the debris on the neighboring property would be prioritized? All reasonable efforts to prioritize that first and move it off the site, you know, reasonable efforts.
Yeah, that will be done in this first crushing operation.
I just want to make sure that's part of the sense of the motion and the condition in which case I have no further comments or adjustments.
Okay, you didn't want to add that on as a friendly amendment?
Do as you wish.
I think we'll trust Mr. Holst that it was going to get done, so...
Fair enough. Okay. Councilmember Vaughn?
I agree with Councilmember Schultz that I think we're going to trust Mr. Holst is going to move this product along. I get, the way I'm hesitant is the 75,000, because as he just mentioned, the applicant is saying, I'm moving product in and out in that industry, and we're kind of setting ourselves up, who's going to gauge 75,000? I don't know how much that is. I still don't even know what 10,000 tons is. And so I just don't know if we have the right... And so I just don't know if we have the right, we're really going to trust the applicant to say, this is how much I got out there. And what I'm concerned about is, as soon as, it's not this applicant, because I believe Mr. Holst is going to take care of what he's saying, but once we start putting these stipulations on there, how do we do that on the next special use permit? And then what's the regulation? What if he buys ten more acres? Does he get to expand that part? That's my little bit of concern with that. I'm trusting on this application, Mr. Holst is going to take care of what needs to be taken care of, but I get very concerned moving forward when we start putting caps on it like that, sort of.
I guess if I, if I...
Please.
If I reach the point where I think that it's not working for me, I could always come back to the council or to the Planning Commission, but I'm quite confident that I can make this work.
You know, councilmember, just to your point, I think that's one of the unique things about a special use permit. He'll have three years to clear. We'll be able to tell whether if it's cleared or not. Yeah, it might be difficult to judge seventy-five thousand cubic yards, but at the same time, he's been given that direction. If he wants to maintain the special use permit for the renewal, then I think he'll understand that. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you. Mr. Holst, and I think part of the thing that we struggled with two weeks ago was that we were kind of pushed on a deadline, and we had questions, and it sort of, we kind of felt like our hands were tied, and we didn't want to put you in jeopardy of not being able to get everything done, but we also wanted to make sure that things are moving forward. So, I mean, if you do, if you're starting to have trouble, or if there's some kind of a problem, it probably would be best, even if the permit isn't even up for renewal, you know, halfway through, if there's something happening and you want to just chat with us, talk to John, or come back to the council, and, you know, then we can, then we won't have so many problems when the permit comes up again. And because we're not interested in shutting down your business or making things that difficult, we just want to make sure that things work.
I had an, our township meeting was the same time last Monday, so I had to be there for some business there, so I couldn't be two places at once. I apologize. Otherwise, I always try to make the meetings, because it's always good to be able to talk to people.
Okay, and for a clarification, I might, you know, when you, when goes through the application here and the requirements of the special use permit, to councilmember Vaughn's point, one of the things that's written is number five, which is, Holst Excavating shall file an annual report to each, report each January with the city council to provide an update on activities and operations on the site. So they must report to the council once a year on how things are going, just to give you a little bit of an insight on that. Okay, to the Schultz amendment, is there any further discussion to the Schultz amendment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the Schultz amendment, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Council, we have the main motion before us as amended. Just to caution you, this is a special use permit, so we need six out of seven votes. Tonight, we have six members here, so it must pass on unanimous vote. Is there any further discussion to the motion before us as amended? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Thank you.
I thank you for your time and for the opportunity to do business in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it. Okay, council, the next item of business is comments from the audience. Is there any comments from the audience tonight? Any comments from the audience? Okay. Council, announcements? Announcements? Councilmember Schultz?
HEDRA will be meeting next week on the fourteenth at six-thirty here in the chambers. John, do you know what's on the agenda?
The HEDRA agenda coming up on the fourteenth. We are going to be discussing some potential expansion plans from an area of business, Hastings Co-op Creamery, and also talking a little bit about the, our participation within the Open Business Program, which provides business counseling services for prospective entrepreneurs and small business owners. Really, a great program, free program that we have here. So our continued involvement in that program, and then updates on other things that are happening.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Vaughn?
Couple of quick updates. Part of the Red Rock corridor, just for the viewing audience, is Red Rock has no longer a light rail. It's moved to bus rapid transit. The commission took a vote last month that we're going to have a movement. Right now, Hastings has allocated one bus stop as kind of the start, and that we would still have to vote on that to be into that taxing transit district, and we'll have some discussions about that. But the commission did talk about expanding more stops between here and St. Paul, and Hastings has potentially three stops. There's going to be an open house on Wednesday, January thirteenth, at St. Paul Park City Hall from five to seven. Just can give an overview that they can, colleagues can stop by if you want, or if anybody wants to give me their input, I can take it from there. But it'll all be up on their website, and then also, Red Rock will come down and talk with us also in the near future about what we're doing with the Red Rock. So bus rapid transit is an education thing that we need to get out there so people know what their, what it is, really is, where it's not just an express bus, it's a taxi cab type option. So we'll be educated. They'll come down, Red Rock staff will come down and educate us here in the near future.
Okay.
The second thing that I'd like to mention as part of the Red Rock is, I sit on the high-speed rail, Minnesota High-Speed Rail. We're going to meet this Thursday down at Red Wing. We meet monthly for people, commission members and council members from Ramsey County all the way to La Crosse, and that's a long-term vision project. Someday, they hope for a high-speed rail from the Twin Cities to Chicago, coming through potentially Hastings here. With that, we're doing a lot of visionary work. We're trying to figure out, it's really expensive. We've got a lot of infrastructure, a lot of updates that we've got to do, and we've got to get some ridership. Currently, there's one Amtrak tour that goes from here to Chicago, and the next goal is to try to get two a day, so we can start getting some more ridership on it. As you all know, rail is very expensive right now. That's why it is not moving as fast as we'd like. But we're partnering with other states, too. Wisconsin's part of this. So we're just, we're talking about this corridor, and then we still got to talk about it all the way to Chicago after that, so that's what we've got for that.
Great. Thank you for that update. Appreciate that, councilmember, and appreciate your work on those commissions. Okay, is there any further announcements? Seeing none, I have a few announcements. First of all, this Wednesday, January sixth, is Melanie's birthday, so happy birthday, Madam City Administrator.
Thank you.
Enjoy that day. Okay?
I'm having lunch with the mayor.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Well, that will be a good day, won't it? I know it'll be a good day for me, so that'll be great. So happy birthday on Wednesday. The Planning Commission will next meet on Monday, January eleventh, at seven P.M. here at Hastings City Hall. On Tuesday, January twelfth, there's a joint meeting of the Parks and Recreation Commission with the Park and Rec Committee of the City Council, which chaired by councilmember Nelson, along with councilmember Bolsonak and Brock's. That's going to be at six-thirty to eight P.M. at City Hall, and their topic will be strategic parks and recreation goals and objectives. So that should be a good meeting. Just a reminder of everyone that Monday, January eighteenth, is Martin Luther King Holiday. City council, or City Hall will be closed on that day. City offices will be closed. Therefore, our next city council meeting will be on Tuesday, January nineteenth, at seven P.M. Prior to that meeting, from five-thirty to nearly seven o'clock, will be a city council workshop that councilmember Vaughn touched on. We're going to talk about transit issues, and we're going to have that discussion on, again, before the city council meeting at five-thirty Tuesday, January nineteenth. On Thursday, January twenty-first, the Public Safety Advisory Commission, that will be meeting at six o'clock, and that location is to be, is to be determined. And also, just a reminder, that Dean talked about, on January fourteenth, Thursday night, beginning at six, I think there's a social hour or so, a meeting at six-thirty, we'll be talking about veterans' issues and challenges to veterans. All veterans, of course, and anyone in the community is invited to attend. Council, there's no other business before us this evening. A motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Schultz makes that motion, seconded by councilmember Brock's. Motion to adjourn. All those in that, in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and we are adjourned. Thank you.